Do y'all get a mayhem, mayhem? Yes. Um, they have it.
There's no...
I don't want to get in front of that camera. How you like your new neighbors? I'm in Laurel. Just me and my chickens. Forty-four chickens. I can feel that. You're part of the day outreach to make sure this is all still good. I don't know that day. I must've been off that day. We're gonna put you there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 25th Council Call Council meeting. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. The roll call will reflect with all members of Mayor and Council present tonight. And at this time, we will entertain public comments on agenda items. We have general comments at the end of the meeting. But any action that we're going to be taking tonight, if you have a comment about, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and make your comment or ask your question. On my right. My left. You got trumped, Terry. Terry was getting up. Y'all got up at the same time. I said he got trumped. Not in the political sense.
Mayor's Council. Is that stunning?
That's funny right there.
Mayor Council, I come to you at this time before any other business is conducted. By this body, could ask that Alderman at Large Ruth Bar resign from her position on the Hayfield City Council. With that, since Ms. Bar refuses to resign, we're asking the Mayor Council to amend the agenda to include the following tonight under new business item... Excuse me. Item six.
Ms. Williams, that's not really an agenda item that we're taking action on. I will welcome those comments at the end of the meeting and the general comments.
Sir, we've been told in the past that anything that is an emergency of nature, and we believe before any action is taken by this body tonight, this is the most pressing thing that we have in the city right now. And I'm asking the Council to amend the agenda and allow the comments to be moved to this part period of time, rather than where you took at the end.
Does anyone desire to make a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll move that we... I'll move that we amend the agenda to allow comments or to create a new item.
To allow general comments.
To allow general comments at this time.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second. Discussion.
Well, we set any limitations on this, or is this a going forever? I mean, what is the procedure we're gonna do here?
I'm only asking to present a note.
But then maybe another and another and another. Not by you, but others.
Our city attorney, would you opine? Do you have any concerns about this or questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this would be in the discretion of the Council. You obviously know what unlimited comments maybe you do. But to an extent, you wanted to set parameters on public comment is in terms of time, you're certainly authorized to do that, or you can create whatever you see fit.
Okay, thank you, Winston.
My only request would be, if I don't listen to anything, is that we don't get repetitive. If other people want to share, if we've heard it, would that be enough? Is that fair? I mean, otherwise, we could go for a while. Okay.
All right, so there's motion and second. We're in discussion. Is there any further discussion? If there being none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, motion carries. You may continue, Ms. Williams.
Okay. Dear Mayor Holman and Council members, we're asking you as a body to take immediate action to impeach Alderman Ruth Bar based on the following information, which has been brought to light within the past two weeks. It is our belief that her actions have risen to the level of crimes of moral perpetuity. Her actions have shocked the public conscience and tarnished the city's reputation. On Wednesday, May 11th, WSB TV reported on the Georgia State Department of Revenue's criminal investigation surrounding the alleged fraudulent activities of Ms. Bar. The search warrant issued by the Georgia Department of Revenue alleged forgery, false statements, and tax fraud. State revenue officials say this case is one of the largest tax preparation fraud investigations they have ever undertaken. Sunday, May the 15th, the Atlanta Journal-Constitution reported thousands of Ms. Bar's clients face potential tax penalties and back interest because of her actions. These clients entrusted Ms. Bar with their most valuable information. A final order, default judgment for fraud has been issued in Fulton County against Ms. Bar. In this case, Ms. Bar convicted... Excuse me, convinced a client, Mr. Longkey, who had just lost her husband, to invest her life savings of $182,000 as a loan to Ms. Bar, which has never been repaid. She thought she had sought out people who were at their most vulnerable, either after the death of a spouse, illness, or simply unsophisticated clients. Ms. Bar's behavior was that of a crook, preying on her innocent clients. On November 4th, 2015, Ms. Bar was indicted by the grand jury in Gwinnett County for the same type of fraud filed by her sister and niece based on Ms. Bar's taking of the life savings of her brother-in-law over $100,000. I'd like to make sure that you hear this. Ms. Bar's guilt or innocence in this grand jury indictment in Gwinnett County is yet to be determined by the courts. These are not isolated instances, but a pattern of fraudulent behavior and breaches of trust of fiduciary relationships. As Mayor and Council, you have the authority to act on behalf of all of us citizens of Hayfield when the trust we have placed in our elected officials is broken. It has been irrevocably burdened by Ms... by Alderman Ruth Bar. We urge you to act immediately to impeach Alderman Ruth Bar from her office for the welfare of the city. If you are unwilling to take this action, please advise us and all citizens why either impeachment or some other form of removal can't take place.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Would you have a comment? Your attorney had a comment. Okay, any other comments due to the motion that was made? That went up on the floor for any comments. So, we're open to comments, and we'll have comments again. Let me let Terry go first, and then you. Sure.
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
Terry Coggrum, 3360 Myrtle Street. Just a reflection, Count, Mayor, Council, from last month when we were discussing the SLOSS that's gonna be in front of the voters in November. I want to reiterate the importance to us of the... I think it's hard. I would be remiss in not saying something, but that's all ready to be addressed by you and number one on the tier list. Thank you very much.
Shirley.
On a positive note, I want to let everybody in Hayfield know that Paint the Town is officially finished today. Unfortunately, our leader Linda Murray is at the funeral home, and she'll give a formal report later. But 35 seniors have a better home because of Paint the Town. And most of the people on the back of my shirt has helped. And if y'all have helped with Paint the Town, I'd like for y'all to stand up. I would like for the chief to know that we had 17 H-Cops out there Saturday morning. When we had 350 people in blue come from Cortlandd properties, if you saw anybody in blue, they were good, good, hard workers.
They weren't on parole.
They wasn't on parole, and I want to thank the mayor and Ruth for coming out and helping us.
Any other comments, George?
Is this working? I don't know if you're aware of it, but...
George, you got that. Just leave it green.
Getting back to the discussion about Ms. Bar, I don't know if you're aware of it, but when Ms. Bar filed her financial disclosure statement with the city, and I'm not an attorney and I'm not a banker, but she indicated no fiduciary relationships. I have a truly certified copy of that from the city. If that... And that was filed on September the 18th of 2015. If there were a previous judgment that Ms. Bar had received, would that not have been a fiduciary relationship? And did you answer correctly on that point?
I'll have to defer to the attorney for the proper definition of fiduciary. However...
I have a truly correct copy.
From my perspective, a fiduciary responsibility would be an involvement with a business or some other organization. Where do you have duties of responsibilities? I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's not fiduciary responsibility.
A fiduciary responsibility relates to the relationship between professional and his client, I who you fiduciary duty Mr. Mayor, and that would relate to that business relationship. I'm not altogether certain, man. Simple judgment would lead us to referring to qualify.
All right, any other comments? Dennis, I think you're on your way up.
Dennis Martino, 51 Central Park. On a positive note, again, Copy of Chrome was a giant success. Thanks to everybody that helped with that. Brought over 100 cars. It brought over 1,000 people. They filled the show what a great city it is and what's gonna make them so...
Any other comments? Okay. All right, in that case, we will get into...
Just talking about the play. Played really well. We had about 100-some people come see it. Allison Lurand was really cute. Kids had a great time.
Would you give your address for the record, John Christian?
3280 Sim Street.
All right, any other comments? We'll get into our public hearing at this time. At this time, I'll call over the public hearing on our T-SLOSS. Final draft of the proposed T-SLOSS list is attached for consideration. Staff is prepared to finalize the project list according to the directions of the council. We have advertised this discussion as public hearing. The deadline for submission to Fulton County is May 30th, 2016. City manager requests a delegation of authority via Resolution 2016-07 to finalize the city's submission in accordance with the city council discussions and various format changes. No details still being processed by Fulton County. And William, I believe you went to a meeting this morning, so before we get into public comment, I'm gonna defer a little bit to William as far as the update on this morning's meeting, because the stuff's still on moving target. William?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a rather moving target, and it's kind of fresh off the press here. So, let me just kind of give you the highlights of what we learned this morning at the local meeting that was hosted by Fulton County Board of Commissioners. There were representatives of all municipalities in Fulton County at this meeting, including the city of Atlanta. Basically, we were talking about the process for moving forward on the intergovernmental agreement that would then trigger an authorization for a referendum. That authorization has to be executed by the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of all municipalities and the county outside the city of Atlanta. I could go through a lot of detail, but I'm gonna just share with you that the big issue that we discussed this morning was when the next meeting would be, because each of the jurisdictions are finalizing their list, and I will get to that in just a minute. We have been diligently working on our list, and I think we're out in front of just about all of the other municipalities at this point. Basically, without going into a lot of detail, there needs to be a meeting held hosted by Fulton County and attended by at least 60% of the municipalities of Fulton County 90 days before the election, which, when you run the math out, that means that that meeting has to take place between July 1st and July 11th. So, there will be a called meeting, and what they're going to do, what was decided this morning, was that they were going to poll the communities and the Board of County Commissioners to see which date, because of the Fourth of July holidays, would be the best date to reach consensus to host that meeting. Once that date is set, we need to attempt. We need to be a part of that conversation and send a representative, Mr. Mayor, if you cannot make it. Basically, once that meeting is held and everyone is in support of the T-SLOSS project lists in process, we can move forward, and then that will appear on the ballot on November 8th. So, now to the list. It's been kind of a moving target for two reasons. Number one, the population numbers, everyone agreed under the formula and under the statute that was passed, to go by the latest population numbers. Those numbers have... That we were using throughout the process since last fall, the latest numbers and the latest data available was 2014. Now, as of today, apparently, or yesterday, or some time in the last few minutes, the ARC has certified the 2015 population numbers, and Hayfield dropped 0.12%. So, we are at 1.15% of population of Fulton County, not 1.17%, which, when you run the math out, makes a little bit of difference in the allocation, okay? So, the new number for us is $6,547,388. There is a sheet on the dais, and we had a few additional copies in the back of the list that information. So, once the number shifted, then there was a second part to the number, and that was the actual revenue projections that are being generated by the Department of Economics, I think at Georgia State, that they're relying on for that data. So, that number has been moving around. So, between the population number and the actual projection of the sales tax number, that's why this has been hard to nail down. As of today, that number I just gave you is official, and the one thing we need to do is also allow, as the statute calls for, additional dollars on the table in case there's an over collection. For example, the law allows you, obviously, to collect up to 100% of the projection, but then it also says that you can go 15% above that cap, okay? Because, again, it's not a precise science. You mean, this is a projection. It's based on a lot of multiple factors over five years. So, what we did was, and I think Josh Powell, Councilman Powell, had mentioned that he wanted to see something in Tier 3. Well, guess what? So did Fulton County. And we basically allocated most of the dollars in the over collection under the Tier 3, as we should have, okay? So, now that we've got all of the final direction, now that we have all the final numbers in place, it was easier for us to put together a list. And I submit to you the list that's on the dais that you have here with the total projection of $6,547,388, with then an additional collection of 15% above that number that would fall into Tier 3 if it were collected and if it was authorized and allocated to us. Each of these dollars will flow directly from the state of Georgia through each participating municipality in the interlocal agreement. That's why it's so critical we be at the table and that we be so careful to make sure that we... and that we be so careful to make sure that we time this to get attached to the document when it's passed. So with that, you have the recommendations for the tiering and the priorities. I believe they are in line with council direction of the last two to three times we've discussed this. And I would recommend it to you for approval. There are two things I need from council tonight. Find my notes. Basically, I need the authorization for the project list as outlined. And then a authorization for the mayor, or whoever you would like, to sign the interlocal agreement once it's submitted to Fulton County. The deadline originally proposed to us was May 30th. Today is May 25th. We are going to be the first of the municipalities in Fulton to make the deadline. Because when they tell us what the deadline is, we try to follow it. There are other communities that will probably be submitting their lists next week. But Fulton County said in the meeting today that they would accept them. Why am I dwelling on that little detail? I'm dwelling on it because there's also a provision in the interlocal agreement, which you also have copies of the latest draft in your package. One provision that says if any municipality fails to participate and the T-Slot's pass, then the remaining municipalities that did participate in the exercise would receive their portion. It would be divided up amongst those that made it on board the train, if you will. So I want to make sure that we're there. And I'm not suggesting that anyone won't, you know, will miss the train or be late or not do that. But I certainly wouldn't want to miss the opportunity for an additional several million dollars. So that's why we're paying close attention to this. We're monitoring this. And the thing that I need from council tonight is to confirm that you're good with the list, that you delegate the authority to me to finalize the list and submit it to Fulton County to meet the deadlines. And third, I guess that you authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement, a draft of which you have in front of you dated 5/25/16. The one item that is different, that will be different in the final interlocal agreement is that percentage that will change. It's not 1.17, it's 1.15. And then there was also an additional provision allowing, stating that the city of Atlanta would participate in the Citizens Oversight Committee. And the committee today struck that language. So other than that, this document is accurate and before you for your consideration. So that's my report.
William, on the percentage, is this is a five-year thing? Is that going to be static or if our population changes, we'll let it out?
They want, it's not a rolling figure. It's set now, going into the process. Obviously, if T-Slot passes and is potentially renewed, those percentages would change.
All right. So now we'll get into citizen comments. I don't think public comments. I'll start on my right. Does anybody have a comment to make about this four against or any questions? On my left?
We have one here.
There's a poll in the way.
I just have a question.
Yep. Identify yourself and address. Jennifer's not here tonight, so she does.
Beatrice Golden Case, 2129 La Vista Circle. Mr. Williams, I just have a question. The original amount was $6,848, right? Okay. So now we're down to $6,547,388.
$6,547,388.
$6,547,388. So basically, we're down about $300,000 or kind of around that ballpark. Would that eliminate something? I mean, would that eliminate Tier 3? Because Tier 3, or would that take away money? Where would that money take you away from? If we were just only get, say for instance, we were only going to get $6,500, whatever, where would we take the other money from?
We've already made the adjustments in the project list.
Right. We made the adjust, there are two, there's, the main reason for the figure changing is the population and the revenue projection. Okay? So that's out of our control in terms of the formula. And then where the funds went to from the difference between the 6.8 and the 6.5 would be mostly in Tier 3.
It would be, okay.
And that's, you know, the other project, I think there was a little trimming done in Tier 2, but the bulk of the dollars are there in Tier 1 and Tier 2, as discussed. And most of the changes showed up in Tier 3.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments or questions on my left? Any, if there's none, council? Any other staff comments? William, you've been the one handling this.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for your patience. And I will say, I know it's complicated, but I believe, and I would like to, I know this is kind of rare, to compliment the county, but Todd Long at Fulton County has done a spectacular job. And believe it or not, I've actually been able to follow this.
It's been a good process.
I understand it and I think we're in good shape. So I would ask for you all to move forward if you so desire.
I just have one question. Did you hear about projects titled $5.734? But projected revenue that you allotted to Tier 1 is not the same amount. Is there a reason?
To match it, William.
Yeah. We were advised by Fulton County to structure it this way. Tier 1 has to be 85% of projected collections. And then Tier 2 is 15% from there. And then Tier 3 is the over 100%. So an additional 15%.
So the bottom number is 85%? Is that correct? Okay.
Any other questions or comments, council? All right, if there's none, I will close, I'll close the public hearing on the T-Slot.
Would you tell us what projects are? I'm sorry, I have to give you guys some comments on them.
All right. Tier 1, operations and safety improvements. Silent railroad crossings, $1.6 million. Item 2, Tier 1, pedestrian improvements. Sidewalks, curved gutter, bike lanes, $1.9 million with a Tier 3 of $500,000. Maintenance and safety enhancements, paving and drainage. Tier 1, $1.4 million. Tier 2, $600,000. Tier 3, $482,108. Traffic and street signage and traffic signal improvement, Tier 2, $600,000. Pre-engineering project management administration, Tier 1, $834,792. All right. That being said, council, any other- Yes.
You got a better idea? Come on.
Sure. Have you closed it out? Close.
Laura Murphy, 201 Colorado. Does this affect the $2.5 million that we had for the railroad improvement that was supposed to be spent this year? Is that going to be spent next year? Where-
It's totally separate. And the $2.5 is going forward as soon as DOT lets us, gives us the green light.
Okay. Do we have any money in T-Slot now?
This hasn't been, I'm worried about the voters still not knowing.
We have nothing in that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Council, any other comments or questions? Well, I was gonna-
I have a question, and it's regarding the pre-engineering project management administration. Did they delegate and delegate and assign each municipality 15%? Or was that something we came up with?
That was something staff has recommended. Based on our experience in dealing with railroad issues and other projects, we're going to have to have a lot of engineering design work done above and beyond what we normally have. Because you're talking about every street in the city. It's going to be a lot of engineering work. And so that's what those funds would go with.
I guess my additional comment, William, would be, as I looked at the details of that and broken out, and I don't know where that is now, but it seems like I saw something like $50,000 for printing expense and-
Oh, that's at the county level. See, there's a half a percent that is taken for administration of the entire T-Slot. And that, those are the, you're referring to the information in that packet?
Possibly. But I'm looking at ours right now, $834,000 for pre-engineering project management administration.
Yes.
So it seems to be that wherever I read that, they said that if all this money was not used, that it would go back in as overflow funds to be redistributed back in these T-Slot projects. So that's the county, not us.
Yeah. That, what you were seeing was the information on how the county was going to administer the program. We certainly will follow those guidelines. I mean, if we don't need this money for pre-engineering, then we can certainly allocate it to Tier 3 projects.
These are all estimates, anyway.
Yes.
Well, it looked like a hard 15%. And I know sometimes administration and many activities that we do seems to take a lot of money. And I just want to make sure that we are conservative as possible with what we need to be researched and engineered and all of that so that we can put anything that's left over back in the project.
Right. I certainly share that sentiment.
Okay. That's all.
We discussed before also that for anything that we can get grants for to join these things just means there's more money to put in another direction.
Correct.
If these caps mean we can't spend more than that, but we can do less.
Correct. And we are definitely going to be searching out, that's part of what we're going to be doing with some of that administrative money, is searching out grant opportunities and leveraging dollars wherever we can.
And Dennis, you might want to talk to him about that printing dollar. That sounded good.
All right. With that being said, are there any other questions, comments, council? Right. I will close the public hearing on the T-Slot item. And this represents Resolution number 2016-07. And if y'all don't mind, I'll entertain and I'll frame my wording and try to match everything we talked about. If that's okay. I will entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 2016-07 or adopt 2016-07 that will allow the city manager to finalize and submit, will allow the mayor or designate to sign the necessary documents. And all of this, of course, will be subject to legal review because the city attorneys will sign off on the as-to-form aspect. So does that summarize what you need?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
I said it.
Discussion.
That'll reflect all the different percentages and everything.
That'll be in the submissions.
And you said mayor or designate. Can it just be you?
That's fine. So, doesn't matter. All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion raised, right hand. All opposed, same sign. All right, under new business.
I need to add something here. I'd like to know if we can amend the agenda to receive a report for the Bright Star Program from Holly Stevens. This is important that we get this on the record. Come on.
Are you amending, are you making a motion to amend the agenda?
Please.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion? Second. Discussion.
William?
Okay. You can get the paper.
Basically, the city runs a summer camp each summer. And for some reason, our friends in the health way, health departments have been rather strict with crossing Ts and dotting Is. And there's something that even though you passed a resolution authorizing this activity, they found the record insufficient. And so Holly has a statement she'd like to read into the record and get your approval on so that we can proceed forward with finalizing the grant.
Did y'all read it from memory? I need to remember. You've got verbal part. Yeah, we need to vote to amend the agenda. All in favor? All raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is amended. Wait, we'll receive your statement.
I was just prepared to accept it. I wasn't sure I was reading it.
Okay.
Okay. So y'all have already accepted the grant from, right from the start. But what we need to have in our amendments included is that you are going to allow me to be the delegate of authority for the program. I so move?
All right. So a motion to allow Holly to be the representative slash delegate for the program. And there's a motion in seconds. Is there any discussion?
Point of order. You have an exact statement of what they were looking for for the record? Okay. Right.
Would you like me to read that?
Yes. Read that so we can make an official point. He'll be on YouTube one day. Yeah, tomorrow.
In consideration and action to enter into an agreement to accept the grant funding from Bright from the Start Program to provide breakfast and lunch to children during the summer months, has been approved by mayor and council. Mayor and council has nominated Holly Stevens as principal program for the city of Haco. And Holly Stevens has accepted this delegation of principal.
Amen. All right. Further discussion, council? There being none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay. At the end of the public hearing, we move on this next item. So I, yeah. So we will shift now to number two. Next item we add is consideration action to accept or annul health benefits for employees. The city manager has met with our health insurance brokerage firm, MSI Benefits, and has completed negotiations with various health insurance providers for the fiscal year 1617. The proposed increase in premium is 20% for $1,360,624.44, which represents an increase of $226,778 from last fiscal year. Staff recommends that council authorizes option B, which is attached to your agenda, which will near our insurance with capital permanente at $1,236,158. The city's annual budget cost would increase $82,322 for remaining costs that the employees share. So in your packet tonight, you have that. And I believe we have a representative here from MSI Benefits. Would you mind coming up and stating your name for the right hand? Then we can start asking our questions.
Good evening. My name is Matt Dittwell. I'm with MSI Benefits. John Blake is usually here. He's in South Georgia at one of the county centers, making a presentation. So he should apologize for not being here. The information you have in your pockets, the increase from the Kaiser, if indeed you all do accept it without any changes, will going to increase the cost to the city approximately $186,000. And the option B that was being recommended would reduce that increase to just under 9%, 8.8%. And what the main benefit changes were is that currently, we have about 106 employees and their families that are covered under the Kaiser HMO plan. And when they go into the hospital for surgery or hospitalization, there's a $1,000 deductible on that plan. And the way we were able to get the increase down 12% was by increasing that deductible liability from $1,000 to $2,000. After the deductible, instead of the plan paying 90%, it would pay 80% of the charges. And then the maximum out-of-pocket, this is what an employee has to pay when they have surgery and hospitalization, that would increase from $2,500 to $4,500. So it is a rather substantial change in the benefits. Some of the co-pays were also going to increase as to what was being paid at the physician level. But those were the benefit changes that were needed to happen in order to pull this increase back down to a more manageable single-digit range. And so those are the benefit changes that are being proposed. There was a third option, option C. And I'm not sure if y'all were, if y'all had the full presentation in front of you. Under option C, if we were to try to get that increase down even more so, down to about 5%, that would make that increase about just under $50,000. That would be done by increasing that deductible to $3,000. And by increasing the out-of-pocket to $5,500, those are the very significant changes that would have- would have to occur in order to pull the increase down even more so. And so I believe staff's recommendation was to look at the Option B renewal there. So I think you have most of it in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'll be quiet, and you can continue.
Just may I like to just add that even though it's regrettable that I have to recommend any kind of increases, this was the best we could do with the negotiating table. But I will say this, that I am working with finance staff right now, and with MSI, to see if there are ways for employees who come to work, people who have lots of leave built up because they come to work and they're not out sick all the time, okay? If maybe we could find a way to structure it to where they could utilize some of their sick leave hours and things that they have built up to help cover gaps in the deductibles, since they've gone up substantially, and we had to use that as a tool to lower the cost to the city. So that is a tool we have possibly available to us to mitigate the impact on the employees, but in terms of the market out there, I think we're fortunate to get the numbers down, you know, to this level, and we've done the best that we know how to do at this point.
Let's see that for just a second, council. Real quick, I do, because people ask me quite frequently, you know, have you talked to GMA? Have you talked to this? Have you talked to that? So, Aetna, we talked to Aetna, they were 26% over their renewal and would not provide a quote. Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia, declining quote due to not being competitive. Signal, we do not believe we can offer a competitive proposal. Georgia Municipal Association, unable to furnish a competitive quote. Uman, 30% of return, not competitive. So I do want everybody to know, we shop really, really hard, and our representatives hold these folks' feet to the fire and try to get the best deal that we can get.
If I may add, on page two of the presentation, the Kaiser renewal is $266,000 less than the proposed renewal offer that the city looked at last year from Aetna. In terms of your best value for the dollar, you're really seeing that with the Kaiser plan. So when we go out to the traditional carriers, they really, from a costing standpoint, they cannot deliver the value that you get with your current plan with Kaiser that you're going to see on a traditional plan. And so...
I have a couple of questions, and maybe a comment to William. William, I don't think sick leave has ever been monetized. When somebody leaves the city, they don't get paid for their sick leave, so I'm not sure how you could apply value to something that we don't recognize. Vacation, maybe, but not sick leave. And secondarily, I guess my concern is for our folks. Nobody plans to go into the hospital for, oh, I don't know, knee replacements or anything like that, but we still have some young folks here who might go in to have a baby. And I can remember when I was at the city, and we had a fireman who, unfortunately, the pregnancy wasn't timed out when we changed insurance carriers. So for maternity leave, and I assume that's considered hospitalization, I would say so. This particular employee would have a wife, and maybe some other children, so they might already be paying $290 a month, and under the new plan, they would have to come up with hospital, the $3,000 for the maternity. Okay, and...
Of course.
And then another 10% on what's not covered, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, y'all think about that. It's, it is a tough pill to swallow, and I don't know how else we can look at this and manage that, but when you have the, to me, the wonderful reason to be in the hospital to have a baby, I don't know if there's ever been exceptions for maternity not being the same thing as if you're having a knee replacement, or, you know, something like that.
The maternity is considered the same as any other illness?
Right.
It's just a little bit more...
Not illness, hospitalization.
And it costs us much money. It's a lot of money to have a child.
Call them a wife.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So you're saying that GMA and all these collective type things are...
I mean, well, it's a GMA, unable to furnish a competitive quote.
And we talked about once before, talking to the coast cities around us and that attraction there.
Well, we are, but if you recall, at the time I had that discussion, I told you it would be at least a year to begin working, we would begin those conversations, but it's such a long-term process to organize, it'll probably be next year or the following year before that option's available. So in the meantime, we have to shop the market as hard as we can and bring you the most competitive processes or projects that we can.
So our employees have HSAs. Do they have the ability to fund an HSA?
Yes, they do, and in fact, it's, I stopped on the medical, you know, on page six of the presentation. Currently, the FSA administrator and HRA administrator is fours and associates, and it's being recommended that be changed to MedCom for a couple of reasons. I think the overwhelming was they felt we could get a little bit more professional service from the MedCom folks, and it was at a lower cost. So employees do have the opportunity to fund the flexible spending account through the course of the year.
But that's not an HSA. Wasn't that your question, Josh? HSA?
Health savings account, yeah.
Right.
Would you say it's a...
Health savings account.
HSA. HSA, is there a difference between an HSA and a FSA? And what is the difference?
I apologize, my area. Yeah, the flexible spending account is an account that you put money into, it's up to 25, 50, and that money goes in tax-free, and you have to use it during the course of the year to pay your deductible and co-insurance. So you get to use tax-free money out of your FSA account to pay for those items. With an FSA, flexible spending, you must use all the money during the course of the 12 months, and most plans, I believe yours probably does, have a $500 rollover provision. So if I say I'm going to put $2,500 into it over the course of the next 12 months, at the end of the plan year, I have to use at least $2,000 of it, or I'll forfeit it. Now, a health savings account, an HSA, is not available to an employee or to any individual unless they're enrolled in a high deductible health plan. And a high deductible health plan is a plan that has a individual deductible, I believe it's right around $1,300, and a combined family deductible, somewhere around $3,000. Those numbers are indexed every year, they move up.
Yeah.
And that means that if you have a plan like that, that nothing, no prescription drugs, no doctor office visits, can be paid upfront, that you have to have the deductible met before anything can be paid by the plan. And they tend not to be very popular with the employees, because while you do have a $2,000 deductible you're looking at on the employees, they can still go to their family doctor and pay their $20 or $25 copay, they can still get their prescription drugs filled for the small copay, but if you go under a high deductible health plan, all your office visits, all your prescription drugs, everything must go to the deductible before anything's paid. And the only advantage under an HSA is that the contribution limits are higher, and the money does not have to be used during a particular plan year, but you must be enrolled in a high deductible health plan in order to qualify for one.
So for someone like me, that would be the perfect thing, because you're not sick a lot, and I can fund my HSA, because that's what I do, I fund my HSA, and then once you reach a certain point, you can put it into a mutual fund, and then you're having the stock market, and you're making interest and that kind of stuff.
What happens with the HS, the high deductible health plan, is that they're actually generally more expensive than the plans we're looking at, because what drives the cost on the plan is when the plan hits the maximum amount of pocket and the insurance is paying 100% of the cost. So if I come in and I say, okay, well, let's put in a flexible, a high deductible health plan with a $3,000 deductible, that means that all members and families would have to hit that $3,000 deductible, and...